Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'm going to call tonight's meeting, the 13th Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. Mr. Underwood is supposed to be joining us on Zoom. Hopefully, he will be able to get linked up to us and can join us. But in the meantime, we are going to go ahead and start our meeting. This evening, we have Mr. Jeff Black from Western Carolina, Mr. Floyd Thomas from Mata Penada District, Mr. Clay Forehand from Madison, I am Nancy Long from Port Roll, and Mr. Jeff Sealy to my left from Bowling Green. At this time, if we would, you all would please stand and join us with invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as we come here tonight, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom. We ask you to look over this board when it makes difficult decisions. We ask you to bless us and guide us with your wisdom, even when tough decisions have to be made. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I'd like to leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we are going to start with opening board comments, Mr. Sealy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I received a number of phone calls over the weekend and last night on reassessment. And I understand the confusion, and it's something that happens so infrequently that people don't remember, or for some people, this may be the first time they've received a reassessment. But the counties were required for the size we are to do it at least every six years, mandatory. The board tries to do it every four, and as we're finding out, four years is probably a little long based on the state of the housing market and where things have actually moved to in terms of just price. Most people I have talked to are a little confused, since I live in Bowling Green, I understand what the town is doing, and I represent the county, so I understand the county's perspective on where we're going. The equalized rate for the county was 50 cents. We actually voted to do a two-cent tax increase for this year, which is on that data sheet, and those are data sheets that people receive, they're not tax bills. Tax bills are coming, and that does not constitute a bill, so everybody needs to be patient. Tax bills are coming, and I hope they will be a little more explained a little more. But the town of Bowling Green's actual equalized rate is six and a half cents. So the town has voted to actually, they advertised a 20-cent tax rate, which would be a little more than three times the rate that we paid this last year. It is not the county's tax rate, it's the town, so I'm just trying to help everybody understand that there are town tax bills and there are county tax bills. So those folks in the county have the data sheet that shows them that there's a 52-cent rate on that information sheet. The town does not have a fact sheet that shows them the six and a half cent rate, it just shows them their county rate. So there is some confusion when people hear the 20 cents, they think it's going to be the county, and that is not at all what we have done. The public hearing for the town's tax hearing is on the 22nd of May at 4:00 at Town Hall. That is, that our hearing for our tax rate is passed, that's why it's on the fact sheet, because we were able to pass that before that fact sheet went out. I'm just trying to give a little clarity, and the folks that live in town need to look at their tax rate differently than the county's tax rate, that's all I can say. We haven't seen, and I'm hoping that the town puts out something that shows what the six and a half rate is for everybody, but I don't know that that's going to happen. So I'm just putting out what the tax rate equalized for the town is, so everybody understands the two differences. I think that's where I'm going to leave reassessment. I want to remind everybody that Clean Sweep is this Saturday, and Memorial Day is the 26th of May, it's a Monday. We will have a Memorial Day service, event on the courthouse lawn at 11:00. The keynote speaker is Dr. Mike Hubbard. The actual blessings will be given by Lance Jeter of Zion Grove Baptist Church. And the sheriff's office, as always, is doing the color guard, they do a fabulous job, and they will be there. And those are my opening board comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. And I'm going to pass now to Mr. Forehand.
My comments are also regarding reassessments. I don't get a ton of phone calls, but I did get a couple, a couple public posts and some people that reached out personally. Not understanding, you know, they see the assessment and what it was last year, and they don't understand the multi-years gap in the reassessments. It was four or five years ago, Mr. Burton, four years, so that the value that was used last year at the 78 cents rate was actually determined three years prior, so it's a four-year span. So some folks had increases in their assessed value well over 100% in my area, and that's noteworthy. I think those properties were skewing the numbers or raising the median and averages for the assessment, but it was not over one year, it is over four years, I have tried to explain that as best we can. And as such, we did lower the rate 26 cents total, which does help, and if you don't have a large and newer home with an amenity like a lake in your backyard, then a lot of folks saw their actual taxes go down. But just wanted to point that out, that is, again, that increase is over a span of four years and not one. If we did it every other year, again, there is an expense that goes along with that, we hire a third-party company to come in and make those assessments, and we pay them a decent contract rate to do that service for us every four years. And if we need to do it every three years or every two years, then it's something that we need to look at and budget for, but that's within our control, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick things. I attended the Business Appreciation Dinner last week, and it was by far the largest crowd of businesses we've ever had in the county. I was pleasantly surprised that the venue was crowded, and since I arrived a little bit later, it was hard to find a seat, so it's great to know that the business community in Carolina is booming and thriving, and we're really happy to see that. On Saturday, although I couldn't stay for a while because of a conflict, I was happy to see that the Sparta Fire Department has their new station. I've got a lot of family and friends in that area, so it's great to have a station there. You know, congratulations to the board and Mr. Sealy, who represents that area. And I appreciate the fact that you copied the Carmel Church station, so invitations and sincerest form of flattery, and I guess our next station will be exactly the same way, so we do appreciate that. And just so people will know, they talked about assessments, we have on our agenda to formalize the real estate payment date, but I do not believe that we have formalized the personal property date, and that should still be June 5th, and I think a lot of people will be confused, and we may have to do something with that as a board to extend that date or at least let it go. And last, I've asked Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Cully earlier about expanding our veteran tax relief to see if it can be included for personal property. I'm not sure we have the authority to do it, since it's a Dillon Rule state, but I'd like to at least look at that. And when we get to the budget, I want to talk about the Thurman Brisbane homeless shelter and possibly an increase for them, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Black?
Yeah, I want to reiterate Saturday's event with Sparta Fire Station, it was excellent. Actually, I know there was a controversy earlier, sometimes politics, you can get a sense of humor. Mr. Beasley, Todd Beasley, who is the fire chief down there, I believe it's Todd Beasley, correct? You know, he and I, after I had made my comment, he actually gave me a T-shirt, and it says clubhouse on it, so on their T-shirt, so I think that's really a nice touch, so I appreciate that so much. But it's a positive, it's an example of, and I appreciate his gracious, but it's an example of how something negative can turn into a positive, and I think we need to see more of that in the county. I also do want to congratulate the graduates of 2025. It is a time for those young men and women to be moving on in their lives, and I have three graduations to go to in a matter of four days, but it's nice to see them all excited about what they're going to be doing and going off into the real world, and so congratulations, Caroline, I'm excited for mine at Spasavania as well. And then finally, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Thomas had said, the Business Appreciation, Mr. Wilson, and the people that sponsored it, they did an excellent job, that's a great venue, so thank you to everyone there, and it was nice being able to talk to different folks there. So that's it, Mrs. Long, Mrs. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. And I have basically the same comments. The Business Appreciation Dinner was very well done and nice, except for Mike not working and me trying to yell through a crowded room and nobody could hear me. The new station is beautiful and much needed, much appreciated down there, and although I do apologize again that some conditions with family caused me to be late, I was glad that I could get there at a reasonable period of time and get to enjoy the speakers and visiting with everyone up there. And to the graduates, enjoy this time, you know, but be smart, use your head, follow your heart, leave the rest to God, but we do wish you the best. And Mr. Underwood, we hope you are fine and hope you will join us whenever you can, if you have made it back to a phone. Just zoom in anytime, call David, he's watching, and we will get you onto this meeting. So with that said, that brings us to amendments to the agenda, and I think there are a couple. Mr. Cully?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, we'd like to remove item seven. The data was transferred Friday afternoon from the Commissioner's Office to the Treasurer's Office. She got proofs back, worked with the printer, and they've assured her that those will be out in plenty of time to meet the 14-day deadline. That's what we had, that emergency ordinance in place in case we couldn't get the tickets, you know, in the mail to meet that code requirement for June 5th. We still, you know, have the penalty and interest delayed till the 23rd of June, but we would like to keep the due date still the 5th to help avoid confusion with personal property, because you start wiggling those dates around, people will get confused.
So you're saying you want both to officially be due on the 5th?
The 5th, but there'll be no penalty and interest.
No penalty for real estate?
For real estate, correct, to give them a little more time. But they will, what I'm saying is, those bills will be out probably a week before the 14-day deadline, they should be out to the post office soon. Brittany was assured.
I still have people that haven't gotten their initial letter, which was interesting.
The reassessment letter?
Right, they got for some property, but not other properties.
You know where that lies, because it's all done by a company.
Right, 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 it all gets dropped at the same time, and I told them that, so...
Is there a serious problem if we just extended the penalty and interest for both personal property and real estate till the 23rd?
I don't, yeah, that'd require another emergency ordinance, but we didn't affect anything, so the personal property bills have been out. Yeah, those have been out, it's real estate that didn't go out.
The two dates?
The two dates, I think, are going to be more confusing, because everybody tends to pay, I shouldn't say that, my inclination is to pay both when I pay.
See, that's kind of what I was thinking, if...
It's all still due June 5th, so we're not confusing personal property at all, it's all due June 5th.
And the personal property bills are out, I got mine.
Yeah, they've been out, yeah, they've been out at a normal time, they didn't have any issue with that.
All right, I just think...
Yeah, I'm sure the treasurer wouldn't say that that's not necessary, that personal property is, you know, out, it's been out, and people know it's due June 5th, and as Mr. Sealy said, a lot of people will pay their real estate on June 5th regardless, but we were just given a grace period on penalty and interest till the 23rd, because we are later than normal getting their real estate tax bill out due to the delays that we had with Visions and the contractor getting all of the data into the Commissioner's Office, through no fault of the Commissioner. They did a great job, I went down and thanked all, there was a lot of overtime worked by staff in real estate and with David as well to get those numbers done as quickly as they, because a lot of things have to be hand-imputed in all of the various programs that we do run that have discounts like the elderly and things like that, land use. So there's a bunch of work that has to go on, once the data came from the contractor and came in from Vision, to ultimately get the book over to the Treasurer. So they worked really hard to get that done, so kudos to the Commissioner's Office for getting that done as fast as they did, so that the bills could go out as early as we possibly could get them.
I don't know for sure, but how does the people with mortgages, who it's paid by their mortgage lender, are they going to have enough time to?
That's more of a treasurer question, but those, went right out to those folks, of course, they should already have all that money, because they're taking that out monthly, so I would assume they would pay, but there, again, if they're late, there's no penalty interest all the way up to the 23rd. So they would have about the same amount of time that they normally have to pay that, maybe even a week longer or two, based on when the mail delivers that to the company.
They don't have all that money if your taxes went up, but they probably got most...
Yeah, most of it, but I mean, they pay it and then assess you or whatever, but...
Right, okay.
Okay.
Anyway, that's the only thing we need to remove, and we have no additions.
Okay. Well, we'll just adopt.
We're going to eliminate number seven from the agenda, that not being necessary. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda at this time?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with item number seven removed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
For Mr. Thomas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. That brings us up to presentations and reports. Davenport Company, are they here?
Yes.
There you are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here on behalf of my senior colleague Courtney, who is traveling today. I'm here to discuss the updated plan, the updated water and sewer rate plan that was last revisited in the 2018-2019 timeframe. The conclusion of the 2018 rate study was to implement... There we go. So the conclusion of the 2018 rate study was to implement 5% user rate increases for the foreseeable future. That rate plan, we have been asked to update now six, seven years later, with new growth projections, a larger user base, and so we have worked with county staff and Joey over the past month or so, month or two, to develop this updated plan. And the goals and objectives of this updated plan are very similar to the 2018-2019 plan with one major change in the positive direction, and that is eliminating the general fund transfer to the utility fund. And so jump into the bottom line here before we get into the details, we're going to recommend to continue moving forward with the 5% user rate increases. That coupled with the 225 new customers per year that the county is currently projecting would allow the county to maintain at least the one-point times, the one-times coverage without general fund support. And as you may recall, in 2018-2019, we were looking at 2 million per year coming from the general fund to utility fund, so that's a big difference. If the new connections of 225 don't come to fruition, as you know, it's market-driven, so those availability fees are based upon new connections, and those are somewhat predictable, but you never know when a downturn may appear, and we may lose those revenues. So if we end up seeing connections less than 225 per year, we may need to go to higher rate increases to avoid relying on the general fund. Also importantly, which was a big topic of discussion the last time, was the cash funding of capital. And so under this plan, assuming 225 connections come to fruition, the county would be able to fund on average 1.3 million in cash-funded capital. However, if we come in below the 225, we may need to deploy some debt funding should those $1.3 million of annual capital projects occur. I do want to point out that, given the uncertainty surrounding new connections, we will continue to monitor this each year going forward.
Mr. Geis, quick question. The 1.3 million in annual capital investments, is that referring to debt service?
No, that's not, that's cash-funded capital, and we got that number based upon depreciation in the '24 audit, so that's essentially how much of the system's assets were used up in '24, you know, it's amortized, of course.
Thank you.
So turning to page three, this shows our recommended rate increases, so on the water and sewer side, we're looking at both 5% for the foreseeable future, and I would like to note while we're here, we're not looking to adopt, to ask you all to adopt rates through 2031, we're actually looking for rates from 2026 through 2029.
I have one question. Is the Dawn system a separate sheet in here, or is...
It's in the back, we'll get to that.
All right.
Yep. So you'll notice that the one area where we don't have 5% increases right off the bat is in the residential availability fee line, we're looking to increase on the water side $1,000 in '26, and on the sewer side, $1,500. And so that would bring the total availability fee to $14,000 per new connection for both services.
Do you have a spreadsheet for all of this?
Yes.
That you guys have used?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm wondering if we increase availability fees more, we could decrease the actual increase to current residents?
That's only one-time money, though, and that's our dilemma, is that the rate continues to increase revenue, and our problem is, we've got some projects coming, like there's a line in Ladysmith that's going to, at Carmel Church, it's got to be replaced.
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, that I understand, I just wanted to see what the balance was. If we increase it more, does that take a percentage off of the existing...
So the 5% increases on the operating side are just to ensure that recurring revenues cover recurring expenditures.
Okay.
And so we don't want to bank on availability fee revenue to cover the recurring expenditures that we might, and we might have to do that if we lowered that 5% increase, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, but I think we have Pendleton is, you know, developing like crazy, Belmont will start doing things next year, we'll probably have the 225 easily, but, you know, where is that? But I guess we can do it offline, you know, if you get a spreadsheet, we can talk about it.
No problem.
Okay. Because we're not going to vote on this tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and then another important point is, we did bump up the availability fees already, $2,500 total, so there is already a pretty substantial increase on that front.
Can I ask a question real quick? On the 225, where's, did that come from, just an average of what's been happening over the last few years on the new connections, or how do we come up with that number? Because the last time I remember, it was like a roller coaster, you would have...
It is, we've been on a steadily increase each year, right now, we're at 212 connections right now, with the new South Village getting ready to come online with that new section, as well as South River, too. Pendleton has, the apartment complexes coming on with 24 units at a time, so that's why we projected those numbers, and in the next two or three years, we look pretty confident we're going to hit those numbers.
Okay. Mr. Sheeple, you're at 212 right now, year-to-date?
Yeah, fiscal year, fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Right.
And so if there are no further questions, I'll dig into the historic side for a moment, just to give you all some perspective. So looking at the last five years, you'll see that operating revenues have increased nicely, and that's both due to the 5% increases, but primarily new customers coming online. I'd also like to point out the connection availability fees line, as you can see, that's grown from roughly $700,000 all the way up to almost 4.7 million. Another revenue line item that is down there, about halfway down the page, is interest revenue, and so that 1.3 million is actually primarily tied to interest earned on bond proceeds, and so that is something we can't count on going forward, and we aren't at this moment, but it's just something to keep in mind going forward, and for the purposes of our projections, we've haircut that. The last point I want to make on this page are the transfers in, so in 2020, you can see almost 2.4 million was transferred into the general fund, but as we've seen increases in operating revenue, as well as primarily connection availability fees, we've been able to eliminate that transfer from the general fund. This shows you that your debt service coverage, and so as you can see, in 2020, we were heavily relying on the availability fees, as I just mentioned, or on the, sorry, the general fund transfer. Now going to 2024, it is, it's only user rates and revenues from the system. Historic days' cash on hand, not sure what's going on with the 23 bar there, I'll have to follow up with you on that, because it should be around the 60, 70-day mark, but the cash balance has increased over the past couple of years, and we're sitting nicely at almost 150 days' cash on hand. And for historic perspective, 90 days' cash was the target in the 2018-2019 rate study. Terms of the existing utility fund debt service, this does not include the Dawn Fund. This, you'll see that the debt profile for the system is gradually declining, and I do want to point out that we have factored in the permanent financing, so the takeout, the repayment of principal over time of that borrowing that we undertook in the fall of last year, so that was related to the Rappahannock River Project.
So this includes the Rappahannock River Project and the Ladysmith Connector, and there was one other capital project, but all that's already been...
Will, Greensand Filthy.
Say again.
Will and Greensand Filthy.
Okay, so all that's built into that dirt service.
So does that also include the additional funds we might need for the Ladysmith Connector? So does that also include the additional funds we might need for the Ladysmith Connector?
That, this, this particular graphic does not. It's built in later on.
Okay.
This is existing debt. In terms of customers, so we've seen, that blue box there says the number of connections is almost tripled. I'd like to point your attention to the most recent, you know, the past three or four years, we've seen on average 280 new connections come onto the system, which is, which is above that 225 that we're using in our projections. And I'll pause there for any questions before we move into the cases. So as I've mentioned, we rely at this current moment on availability fees, and that comes from new customers. And that is allowing us to avoid using the general fund. And so what we've done here is we've looked at 225 new connections a year, and we've also looked at, okay, what happens if we only see 150 new connections per year? And what we found is the 5% rate increases on the 225 case, that case one there, would be sustainable. However, going to 150 connections, lowering those new connections in each year would require a higher rate increase.
So before you, before you leave there, that, that would be 225 minus 150, 75 connections, times the availability fee would be, how many millions of dollars, or 1.5? So it's 75 connections short. What's the availability?
I don't have my calculator. The availability fee is going to be 14,000, or the proposed availability fee is 14,000. So it's 14,000 times 75, or 14,000 times 75.
Which is, okay.
1,500.
1,500.
And that's a lot less, that's a lot less than we have been pulling out of the general fund. Okay.
So moving on to slide 12 here, on the expenditure side, I think historically, the best practice or the widely accepted assumption for projecting expenditures was 3%. But given everything that's gone on in the past few years with the supply chain and everything else, we've bumped that up to 450, and that's intentionally conservative. On the debt funding side, and we'll get into this a little bit in a minute, so we're assuming for the moment for this projection that you all are funding 1.3 million of capital each year, and that's tied to the depreciation amount. But we also have incorporated 9 million related to two projects, and those projects are the Polcat Creek Interceptor, and the other one is related to the Rappahannock River Water Treatment Plant?
Joy?
Site, Water Treatment Plant site. And so at the 5% rate increase threshold, what we've been doing for the past several years and what we're proposing here, on average, if you use 5,000 gallons a month, your bill would go up roughly $6 a month. For 3,000 gallon a month users, it'd be closer to, you know, $5 a month. How does that compare to your peers? You, wow, I'm seeing how busy this slide is now that it's up on the screen. So what you'll see there is, I want to point your attention to the number of units, so that's the size of the system. And so we're probably in the upper third, but I would like to point out that everyone below us has more users, so they're able to spread the costs around. There are also some systems that are of similar size that have rates that are higher than us, and it just depends upon the system's needs and so forth, among other factors.
Mr. Geis, this does not include private systems, correct?
That's correct. In terms of the availability fees, you can see we're more middle of the pack. I know I've been following the availability fee levels pretty closely, because we've been doing a lot of utility work lately, and it seems like most places are increasing those availability fees just due to increased capital costs. And so moving into case one, now this assumes that the 225 new customers a year, and that's broken out between 220 residential and five commercial. We're assuming for the commercial side that it's a commercial one user. They're using about 12,000 gallons a month. So no, no major assumptions on the commercial side there. But we point out here, as I mentioned, the 5% annual rate increases, 5% availability fee increases, and then debt funding of 9 million. And so this goes back to the point I made earlier, where only the projects that we identified, so the Rappahannock Project in '26, and then the Polcat Creek Interceptor in '27, those are the only ones that we would need to borrow for, should these projections play out. The 1.3 million of recurring capital would be cash funded. And so these are the detailed numbers behind this case, and as you can see, the debt service coverage remains at a nice level of 1.3x all the way up to 1.7x. And then the days cash also grows nicely up to the 160 range. This just gives you a visual representation of the debt service coverage. As you can see, the, we would fall in the rating category in between double A and single A in terms of debt service coverage. Case two, this assumes lower connections per year, and so that results in higher rate increases, particularly in '27 and '28. And also, we would not be able to cash fund as much capital. So you will see that we would have to start relying on debt funding a little bit more to fund those $1.3 million each year of recurring capital needs. And under the scenario, the debt service coverage numbers don't look as good, and neither do the days cash on hand. So I'll pause there for any questions.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, when you do these, or I don't know if you can add something to this, but one thing that would be nice is, I think we still have a private water company that is our, the biggest producer of water in the county, and it would be nice to show to, you know, the county, you know, what the difference between public and private water is, because I think that would be a benefit to the county. So if we could put that in the future, because most of our residents are still on the private side, Lake Landor, Lake Caroline, you know, Campbell's Creek, part of it, so forth. So that would be something that would be nice to, just as a comparison.
Yeah, and we can, we can provide that as a follow-up as well.
And even to add on to Mr. Black's comment is, could we add like the King George Private Water Company to really show what's driving public, I mean, where we are public versus private? Because some of the private stuff, people get confused about what that means and how much that costs. And I think if you could show sort of both of those watering, because I don't know if we have sewer other than in Lake Landor, I'm not sure what happens in King George. I think that's just water. But to just show those differences, because they are very big.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm going to interject. Mr. Underwood is online with us now, so welcome, Reggie.
Thank you, Nancy. Can you hear me?
Yes. It's good to hear your voice. Glad to have you with us. We are on the water report.
Yeah, I'm there.
Any other questions? Continue.
All right, moving into the Dawn side here. So this is a separate system. There's a flat rate charged to customers. There is some general fund support. As I understand it, historically, the general fund has transferred the funds required for the roughly $170,000 debt service payment every year. But what we've seen is that the general fund has had to transfer a little bit more. And so we're going to look into four different cases, actually, on the Dawn side. And so what that, what those cases contemplate are... We, so we've looked at funding depreciation, and then we've also looked at funding depreciation while also eliminating the general fund transfer. And so what funding depreciation means is similar to, on the larger system, we are building in those recurring capital needs into the, into the funding plan.
My slide's on the side. My slide's over. My mic issue. Blows. There you go. Did Mr. Underwood have a question? I'm sorry. All right, keep going.
Yes, he just needs to know what slide we were on.
Oh, gotcha.
Gotcha.
Actually can't see it.
30.
So if we are to include depreciation in the funding plan with the $1 a year rate increase as proposed on case one, which is equivalent to a 3% increase thereabouts, the general fund transfer would amount to roughly 360 in FY '27, and that would go down and then come back up to around 200,000 per year. And so again, that assumes that we include the funding of ongoing maintenance.
Mr. Geis?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see the current rate anywhere on this page.
It's in the appendix. It's about $37 altogether.
A year?
Per month.
And that's water and sewer?
It's just sewer.
Just sewer?
So excluding depreciation, you can see the transfer from the general fund is less, obviously, because we're, we aren't funding the additional costs associated with, with ongoing maintenance and needs.
You said maintenance. Do we have a separate cost for maintenance? Mr. Sheeble, do we know what maintenance there is, is actually running utilities?
Yes, sir. There's two line items, 3310, which is repair and maintenance, which has to do with any time that we do any repairs. It involves labor that we're paying for. And there's also 6018, other operating supplies, which pays for pumps and parts and floats as we're putting those in. So there's two different line items that we look at and we track for those.
Do we, are those included in this?
Yes, sir, they are.
Mr. Sheeble, before you sit down, when did the Dawn system get started? Is that like 15 years ago? '07?
We've got two years, two years left on debt service.
The debt service will roll off, and as you can see there, in '27. So '27 will be the last year.
20 years?
We started in '07.
2007, yes, sir.
And so case three is the, is the most impactful case to the rate payer. This shoots to eliminate the general fund transfer by 2031, and also funds ongoing depreciation. And so that would result in a 27% annual increase. And so based on existing rates of about $37 a month, that would bump up to around $47 a month, and then it would grow from there. Excluding depreciation and also eliminating the general fund transfer would result in about a 13% rate increase, which equates to about $41 a month in FY '26, and then it would grow from there at 13% annually. So to summarize, case one and case two, they both assume a $1 increase per month for each customer. Case three assumes roughly a $10 increase, and case four assumes roughly a $5 increase, four to $5 increase.
Mr. Sheeble, can you give us the annual cost for maintenance down there for, with I just can't pick it out.
So other operating supplies, if you go across, I see 25,000, 29,000, 37,000, and as you go across that line item, about midway to the page, it says repair and maintenance. So we broke those into two line items. So it's bolted in the middle of the page, says repairs and maintenance. So some of those costs go into new connections, so that's shown there, because we have to end up installing floats and the lines and the wiring that goes into that line item, as well as our 3310. So we broke that into two different ones. You see that, Mr. Sealy?
Is there a connection fee for the Dawn system?
There is. So the connection is actual cost of the system, and then our availability fee is $3,200.
Can you say that again?
So the actual connection, for us to go out and do the connection, is the actual cost. So if it costs us $15,000 to do the connection, it's 15,000. So with that particular program, we cover 100 foot as part of that connection that comes in. So it's 100 foot from there to the tank, and then the tank and all of the floats and electrical that gets connected, all that gets charged and is part of our normal fee that we charge. And if we have to do a road bore, there's an additional fee for that, but it's around 15,000 to 18,000 if there is a road bore not in there that we charge, plus the availability
And I assume a lot that would choose to go on this system would not perk and is obligated. Is there a?
There's an obligation, if you're within 400 feet, that you have to connect to the sewer line.
Okay, so there's an obligation, there is an obligation on this system as well?
Correct.
Okay.
How close are we to? I don't know that I understand the whole Dawn system. I just know it's a series of tanks, is all I remember.
Yeah, it's a, it's a step tank in every house, which means that instead of having a septic tank, there's what's called a step tank, and it's like a septic tank, except it's got two compartments. So the first side holds the solids, there's a filter in there, and then the liquid is transferred to the other side of the tank. We have a pump that's in there that we maintain. The customer pays for the electric as part of the system, but the pump we maintain, and that pumps all the way to the wastewater treatment plant facility. And then we've got the equipment there. So each connection has a step tank in there. So each home, as they're connected, they've got that fee of having to install that tank and the pump and the line going to the main.
And Mr. Sheeble, folks should, should understand that this Dawn system came about from a state grant and some federal funds, but the reality was that the people in Dawn in this area were suffering because their septic systems were failing, and it was interfering with their water. So we, we actually addressed that failing system to make those houses habitable again. So it's a, it's a point that people need to know that in areas of the county, there was a tremendous amount of distress, and this system helps alleviate that.
Correct, yes. We had a public health emergency due to the failing drain fields were contaminating the drinking wells.
Right. And they're all shallow wells in that area for the most part.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so in the back, we've provided details relating to the calculations included in our projections, and we've also included rate tables for the next several fiscal years based upon the proposed increases in the presentation. But other than that, I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from anyone?
Mine's just one statement, or?
I have one last question, Mr. Sheeble. When was the last time we adjusted any rate for this system?
July 1 of last year.
I don't remember doing that.
So the Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution when we did the increase, and it was an automatic increase for over a four-year period. So it's 5% each year. We'll do the same thing this time. So when we get done, one of the things we asked the board for is allowing us to go to public hearing. We'd like you to select an option on each of these that you would like to fund, and we'll take that to the public hearing. That way we can hold that and amend the ordinance to increase rates. And we're looking for four years again, so it'd be '26, '27, '28, and '29. And again... And again, the original recommendation for the county system was the, the 5%. We didn't show the 8%. If we get less connections, I think we would go with the five if that was amenable to the board. And then if we see an issue where we're not meeting those year two or three, if things take a turn, we'll come back to the board and, and see if we can go from that five up to the eight if necessary.
And if we have, if we have 325, then we might better go down to four or three?
Possibly. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. And before we, we vote on this and have the public hearing, you're going to get us more data or the spreadsheet so we can compare what, what it would be like if we increased the availability fee, right? Because philosophically, that's, that's my dilemma. The people that are currently on the system are paying for the system, which is right. You know, if you get access, you should pay for it. But to, to give them the extra burden of improving the system for somebody else that moves in here next year, year after whatever, that new person gets the benefit of the system, but isn't really bearing the burden like the existing users. So I personally would like to see a higher availability rate so that the effort is spread around, especially to people who come later. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Black.
Mr. Shebel, one thing, and I know it's not part of this chart and so forth, but what is being done to improve water quality? Because I've had times when, when people put out stuff about, you know, the, the water quality being pretty terrible. And I've got some friends in Lake Landor and they are saying, well, the public system isn't that much better. Talking to some people. So what are, what can we do? Or what is being done in places like, you know, Pendleton, Ladysmith Village, where we're there on public water to improve the water quality that they're getting?
So we've installed green sand filters at all of our well sites that have iron and manganese issues. So we've had a drastic, you know, changing our water quality by doing that. So before we used to have the rotten egg smell on a regular basis because of the hydrogen sulfide that's created from the iron bacteria. And then you had the discoloration that you would have in the toilets with, you know, brown rings, sometimes black if it had manganese. So we've kind of taken care of those with the projects we've done. The issue we have now really is the hard water that we have.
Right.
And, and without putting in a water treatment plant, there's not a real solution that's affordable to be able to put in a solution without a water plant. And on wells, it's just, it's near impossible because you'd have to pump every well to the water plant and then put it back into the system. So really the, the best solution we have is getting to the Rappahannock River where you don't have all the issues with the chlorides. So our biggest issue is, is we're extracting water from bedrock. And as we're doing that, we're leaching all the minerals that come out of the rock.
That's why it's so hard.
That's why it's so hard. So we've got the chlorides in there and there, and then we've got the total suspended solids that also create somewhat of an issue. But we've been able to reduce the total suspended solids as well as iron and manganese and, and pretty much eliminate those. So, but the hardness, short of an individual house putting on a water softener, there's not a lot we can do on our end.
Okay. Thank you. That's good information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shebel. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
So if we could get the board's authorization so that we can go to public hearing and we can get that advertisement all up for the June meeting, that would be great. And we've given you a couple of case options, case one and two for the water system and wastewater of the county system. And then there were four rate cases on the Dawn system. And it's really for us to know which one you would want to go. We could always go backwards. So if you wanted to do the worst case on both, you could always reduce that. Or you can select the one if you think that's what you would like to do.
And you want that tonight?
It would be nice so we can get the advertisement so we can get July 1. We're, we're about two months behind where we were hoping to be.
I'll move. Do we need a motion for it?
Yes, sir.
I'll move that we go to public hearing with, based on the information and the recommendations of staff. Four choices. So which option?
Yeah.
Which option do we need? Yeah.
I'll, I mean.
I think we should go with the worst case and then we can, after the public hearing.
Yep. I agree.
We tend to always pick the worst case after we go with the worst case. So let's just go with the 5% because we, we can adjust it every year.
I'm, I'm good with the 5%.
All right.
That's case one.
That's case one.
Case one, yeah.
And then the Dawn system?
And then on the Dawn side, it's really three different cases. It's a $1 increase. It's a roughly $5 increase or a roughly $10 increase.
Let's go with the $1 increase because that's an alibi too.
So it's 5% and $1?
Five, yeah.
5% is about a dollar. It's not both.
Oh, 5% is about a dollar.
A dollar on the Dawn fund is roughly 3%.
Can we just make it five across the board to make it accurate?
You make it the same for everybody?
We can make it five.
But, but they're not really the same kind of systems. That's the whole thing. And, and that's the same with, with me because I had the Milford system and, and you know, that was a, a load of moderate income system. And all those houses are still there.
Yeah, but we're going to have maintenance. The Dawn system's getting older and there's maintenance coming. I, I don't understand the whole system because I've never been through it, but it's a bunch of tanks. And when that starts, we're going to have some debt service. So we're, we're already in the general fund. So if we do the 5%, it'll at least give us a little headspace early on debt service wise. So.
But that debt service is decreasing as of '27.
No, I'm talking about maintenance as we move forward with replacing some of those, whatever it is in that system. Because we're getting on to the 20-year mark of it very, very soon.
I'll make a motion.
The system will, will decrease.
I'll make the motion to go 5% across the board if I can get a second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second.
Please second it.
By Mr. Forehand for 5% across the board. And we can always go down. We can't go up once something is advertised. So there will be discussion and we'll have time to, to digest all these figures before that. So I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And just real quick to follow up on Mr. Sealy's comment. So the, the Dawn system, you know, you've got a concrete tank that's in the ground. You know, here we are approaching 20 years. There's not really an issue with the tanks themselves. What we do see an issue with is pumps, but that's an ongoing cost. When the pumps were originally installed, the engineer designed pumps from a third horsepower, half horsepower, three-quarter horsepower, three-quarter, uh, highhead, one horsepower, one horsepower highhead, one and a half, two horsepower pumps. Essentially what happened was is, is it, it makes sense in a design standpoint because the systems that are closer have lower pressure points than the ones that are farther away. So the ones that were close had smaller pumps in them. The problem is, is that the system being low pressure, you still get air that gets into that system. So as the air gets into the system, you have air release valves. Well, some of those lowered pumps could only pump to about 12 to 15 PSI. Well, your air release valves don't start really functioning well until they get over 20 PSI. So what would happen is those pumps would just run and run and run and run and we'd burn pumps up. So at this point, 20 years later, we have replaced every pump in the system at least once. So now we've got two horsepower pumps in the entire system. So the, the last four years, we've kind of increased cost because of all those pumps that we had to replace. So we were replacing the smaller ones. So now we're kind of at a point where it's just the normal replacement of having to replace pumps. And, and we're hoping to be, you know, somewhere between 15 and 20 pumps a year is a normal replacement. The Dawn plant itself has some blowers and a couple of pumps there, but that's mostly concrete and easy to do. We've got maintenance there. And then in, we've got two more years of debt service. And then on year three, we've got a, one of the drain fields. So we've got two mass drain fields. We've got 50 acres. And so right now we're, we're using only a few acres. So we've got 50 acres so that we could put in additional drain fields in the future. So on year three, once debt service is done, I'm going to have in the budget and ask for some capital funds to put in another drain field. So we have a drain field that's functioning right now. We're still meeting regulations, but we're seeing that we're starting to have an issue with it. So we want to make sure that we're staying ahead of that. So we think the best time for that would be to happen is when the debt service drops off. We can use those funds that, that third year and then that would go away. So that's kind of the plans right now, just to kind of give the, the board a, a heads up on that coming.
Mr. Shebel.
Thank you, Mr. Shebel. The comment and the, uh, the motion did pass.
Yeah, the, the motion.
Madam Chair.
It's four to two. Yeah, we voted on.
Yes, Mr. Underwood.
I, I just want people on the board to know that when that system, like Mr. Shebel indicated, when that system was put in, the, the best materials were not used. So consequently, people have spent exorbitant amount of money replacing pumps and parts for, for their system to get those deep wells to work, but have not functioned well. So the reason I'm voting no is I just think that, that they bore quite a bit of cost replacing some of those pumps as well. And I just think that, you know, the grant was, was put in place, you know, almost 20 years ago. And they did not get the best equipment for each individual home. So consequently, there have been issues with that wastewater, I mean, with the Dawn wastewater system.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
But we're not talking about wells. We're talking about wastewater, correct? Huh?
He's talking about the Dawnhausen project that went on. That, that replaced wells. So yeah, we're talking about Dawn wastewater system. The pumps are the counties.
Yeah.
We have all of it. So the, the, what he's talking about with Dawnhausen project, maybe we built 20, 25 houses. I can't remember the exact number. New deep wells were put in and, and some of those pumps have, owned by the people that own the houses. That was put in with a, a DHCD housing on grant.
So the two different things.
Yeah, but, but it happened all about the same time.
Yeah.
I think it was all before my time, but it happened all about the same time.
It was, yeah, it was what, 17 years ago? And, and that grant, I remember George Allen, I believe, was the governor. And the NAACP asked to, to address that area and he did. So, you know, we ought to thank them for that. But the reality is we didn't have enough money to do the two horsepower pumps, like you said. So that's, that relates to what Mr. Underwood is saying.
I think that was designed that the engineers thought that closer, closer you were to the drain field site where the plant is, you would need less pump, which would in theory save the homeowner some money because they're not running a two horsepower pump. They're running a half horsepower or whatever. But it just didn't produce enough pressure to actually work right. And, you know, we were taking an old fire truck down there on a regular basis, having to push things, uh, to push the air out of the lines when I first got here. So we've, we've made tremendous, we don't do any of that anymore now that the pumps have all been replaced. We replaced the worst ones first that were causing us the most trouble. But system works reliably now, but there are future, obviously future repairs on something that's going to be 20-plus years old.
But the debt service will be gone in two years. We, we can roll the debt service into maintenance.
That's what we hope.
Okay.
Mr. Shebel.
Yes, sir.
Um, a, if we were to build that third drain field, would that be hooked up to actually be operational and just spread the load?
Yes.
Okay.
So right now we've got a dosing tank. So as the flows come in, it goes into six separate treatment units. The treatment units actually go into a dosing tank and then the pumps alternate, but it'll go to one drain field. And then it shuts off and then it pumps to the next one on its next cycle. So it constantly is going back and forth.
Yeah. I, I would just want to, when you initially said it, I was thinking it might be idle for X number of years. I know that it'll normally handle that so well.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now we are on to county administrators' proposed fiscal 2025, 26 budget presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We'll go over the, the proposed 26 budget. Sorry, due to my pneumonia, but late getting this out to you. And I still have a cough. So if I start coughing and drink water, you know what? What's going on with that?
We're just glad you were here. So drink all the water you need, Mr. Thomas.
That's what I pushed.
This budget just wasn't meant to be.
Sorry, technical difficulties. All right, you're going to have to move it. I can't. Always have fun when you're zooming in pushing.
Mr. Underwood, hang in there. We're having some technical difficulties.
That's okay.
Can you move it? That's weird. Zoomed in from my laptop. Stephen broke it. Cross your fingers. All right, I'm moving a little bit. For FY26 County Administrator Proposed Budget, the proposed budget includes a 2 cents increase to the real estate tax rate. And as you recall, y'all have already approved that and the tax bills will be in the mail this week. The 26 general fund budget introduced and advertised, $75,879,421. It's 3,000, 3,734,404, which is a 5.18% increase over FY25. The FY26 total, all funds budget introduced and advertised is, and this is less transfers, 155, 155,362,991, which is 7,495,099 dollars less than 25. And, and that's capital, which is a 4, 4.60% decrease from 25. If you remember, we borrowed some, some money, the school capital, you'll see later, for the energy projects in the HVAC at CMS. General fund revenues, a public hearing was held on the tax rates and adopted on April 23, 2025. Real estate rate went from 78 cent per hundred to 52 cents per hundred, down 26 cents. Aren't popping. Personal property remained the same at 350 per hundred. Machinery and tools, 350 per hundred. Proposed transfer from the unrestricted general fund balance, zero. That's decreasing from FY25, 3,98,415, 100% down. And as we talked about when I was here at the podium, the first time talking about this, really feel this is important that we don't have any general fund transfer to protect our bond rating. And you heard, you heard that from Courtney as well. to protect our bond rating. And you heard that from Courtney as well. Proposed transfer from the unrestricted fund balance for one-time capital purchase that are in the general fund, 1,464,702. So that's not paying salaries, but it is buying various things that are in various departments in the general fund. Now, proposed transfer from the Caroline Detention Facility Fund, 571,857. So there are some transfers, but those are either from the detention facility or to pay for one-time purchases, not for ongoing, and I think that's that's critical. Key expenditures, new positions, one full-time sheriff sergeant courts deputy. That had been a part-time person, but it was not working well at all according to the sheriff, and it was his number one priority. As I mentioned, he did ask for three road deputies, but I couldn't find the funding to fund those at this time. One full-time building inspector and inspections, they are overworked and have had to hire part-time help to try to keep up with the amount of building that's going on. One full-time HR generalist, and that's moving from part-time, so that that was funded at 30-plus hours, 24 hours a week. So that's about 16-hour increase plus benefits. And then four time, four, four full-time utility positions in the utilities fund. And as you just saw, we are covering that, that's not a general fund positions, those are utility positions. And as you can, perfect it worked out, as you saw the increase in the number of customers we have, we have an increased workload servicing all those customers with calls, leaks and various things that we do within utilities. So those those are in, so that is across two funds, both general fund and utility fund, 502, 587,466.94, and that includes benefits. Funding a 3% pay increase for constitutional officers and social services, 4% for employees not included on the county playpen. And a 1.5% bonus on the 25 comp board salary, if not covered by the proposed increases. Remember, all the constitutional officers' positions, other than the constitutional officers themselves, are on our pay plan. But the state, in their infinite wisdom, as they do sometimes with the schools, has put this 1.5% bonus on their 25 salary, plus then funded a 3% pay increase on their comp board salary. Well, their comp board salary is much lower than our pay plan salary, whether that's deputies or somebody in treasurer's office or commissioner's office. So we had to create a spreadsheet to make sure that everybody at least got the 3% plus the one point, the amount they would have gotten with the 1.5% bonus on our pay plan, which most of them did work out. There were all the, obviously, constitutional officers, and there were a couple of employees that are getting a little bit of a bonus. They won't get the whole 1.5% because they're getting it in salary. So the bonus amount total plus FICO is 8,814.61 for the constitutional officers and a few employees. I don't remember exactly the number, but that took a number of days to work our way through that instead of just what I'm doing for everybody else, which funding a 2% adjustment to the scale and a step increase for employees on the public safety plan. Also funding a 2% adjustment to the scale and a step increase on the county pay plan. Both plans require satisfactory annual performance review to receive the step. So if you're unsatisfactory in your work performance over the last year, then you will only receive 2%, which is the cost of the scale going up. The total of that is 1,197,320, if everybody were to receive satisfactory annual review. Funding required for the general retirement system increases and funding the impact of the VRS hybrid plan, higher contributions for VRS hybrid plan employees and health insurance increases. The VRS increase this year is 115,418. And the health insurance increase, which was approved by the board January, I think, early in the year, 687,279. So the total FICO, VRS and health insurance increases are around 825,950. So as you can see, that 5% we're doing is pretty much covered in a number of just programs. Caroline County Public Schools, the introduced 26 Carolina County budget provides 18,936, 936,331 in local funding for schools to the School Operating Fund. This is 1,267,286, more than FY25 contribution. This amount is 151,491 above the required local effort, which equals, I figured out a per pupil amount of the local shares, so that allows 35 additional students for growth above the planned ADM that the schools used for their COUT tool that the state provides. So that's where that number came from. I found we were underneath, we weren't meeting with the number I had before, the 900-some thousand. We weren't, we weren't meeting the required local effort. So to get above that, I figured it out and just tried to do 35 student growth. The budget includes 599,221 in transfers for school bus leases to textbook fund and school CIP. Also included is a capital transfer for school buses, five buses, 569,862, which is about 15,251 more than provided in FY25. The net increase of all transfers to public schools over 2425 is 1,314,824 for a 6.92% increase. The general fund also supports 4,562,297.37 in school-related debt service. Total transfers to and payments for the public school system are 24,867,711 and represents 1.303,872 increase or 5.3% overall. Total proposed for FY26 school budget, all funds except capital, is 73,453,855. And that's only when you add all that stuff up because capital went down 44,098 or 0.06% over 25. Whoop, too many pushes. If you take a look at what the School Operating Fund request was, was 67,80,800, 80,890, which was 3,698,255 more than provided in FY25. The proposed county budget reduces the school board request by 1,699,443. So that's reducing their request, not their budget. So sometimes that gets lost in translation, that's their request. Their request by category, which is how we fund and appropriate, is 47,600,274 for instruction, their largest category, which was, they proposed to increase by 1,681,078, 3.66%. Admin attendance and health, 3,490,918, increasing 635,479 or 22.26%. Pupil transportation, 6,273,119, 343,015 increase, 5.78%. Operation and maintenance, 5,840,000 and 165, so 411,742 dollar increase. Facilities, actually going down a little bit, 462,235, decrease in 39,386 or 7.85% down. And technology, proposing 3,414,179, increase in 666,329 or 24.25%. Those numbers will have to be adjusted by the school board to take into account the 1,699,000 dollar proposed cut to their request. So the total proposed operating fund budget by the county administrator is 65,381,447. That is an increase that includes state funds of 1,998,812 or 3.15% over FY25. So I know that's sort of confusing, but it's the way we have to operate. They make a request, I propose to fund it, their categories, once you adopt, then they can go back and adjust those categories to the money that the board has appropriated. And then they bring that back to us to appropriate to them.
Do you have a state funding number?
Not handy, it's it's within the budget document, it's.
Within the one that we just got today? Within the one we just got today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, when you get in school, get into revenue for 205. And then what you'll see is 206, 206 was their special funds, that's way, that's way down. So it's a net, not a, so they got more state money but lost other special revenue money, so what they were getting. But the overall amount of new money in their operation fund is that number that I've shown there.
That was my question because our composite index went down and there's this focus on funding from the state.
But they lost money in special revenue funds. If you look through the line, go through those, their school funds started textbooks at 203, but 205, 206. If you look through those, it's got all the revenues, you'll see the ones that are down. And so the state's up, that's down, the net is a wash.
But both of those came from the state.
Yeah, but some of it passed through from the feds, I think. Title this and, I, you know, getting way in the weeds, but.
But I mean, the reality is the state gave you more money on one hand and took away money on the other hand.
Right, correct. And the numbers that are in there are the numbers that I got from Marsha Stevens with the schools.
Okay.
For those. And those probably subject to change a little bit based on what they'd finally adopted. Other funds, Social Service Fund, Fund 201, is increasing 267,656. That goes up to 3,885,832. Mr. Parton is chairman of the Conference Services Act and has requested 900,000 more dollars. Believe it or not, unfortunately, with the growth in our population, it's also in growth, the growth in youth that we serve through the Conference Services Act.
But this used to be a state program that the county, that the county got in the last 10 years or so.
Oh, no, no, 20, 20, 25 years ago, they could create this. This was all handled by court services and schools, the county wasn't involved at all, unfortunately, I've been around long enough when this whole got created. And then it was based on the composite index. So where I used to work, we had a whole lot more money in it on the local side than the state did. Here, luckily, the state puts in the majority of the money. But so that 900,000 is not all local money, but it is growth in that fund to cover our expenses, and that's what we anticipate we're going to spend this year.
But it's important for people to understand, this is what we call unfunded mandates?
Partially, yeah, yeah.
Because this was all done by the state.
There was no local money, right. There was no local money in any of this because the program didn't exist. It was completely handled by court services, social services and the schools. And then they created this act, put the county in charge of it and put us having to pay a percentage based on composite index. Yes, you're, it's correct, but I think it was like maybe 25 years, it's been longer than you think. 93, yeah, so it's been around a very good while. Law Library Fund increasing just a little bit at 2,532 from 6,900 to 9,000. Courthouse Maintenance Fund, 16,923, increasing 2,873. Tourism Fund, 299,183, increasing 14,217, excuse me. Confiscated assets, just leave that the same based on, you know, that's just one of those things, it depends on what gets confiscated. Fire rescue grant fund's going to increase 20,000 to 210,000. I checked that number out with the chief again to make sure it was what we thought would happen. Sheriff Special Revenue Fund stays the same at 32,914. Economic Development Fund stays the same at 14,775. Proffer Fund decreasing from 1,452,800, which we appropriated some money to schools last year in the HVAC project, I think, but down to 266,870, which I'm transferring to debt service to cover some transportation debt service. Proposed to transfer. Program Income, Dawnhausen, as we mentioned earlier, the housing fund, that's decreasing to 3,500 because most of those houses, I think we only have a couple now that are paying anything, everybody's paid theirs off. So as we spend that down on various projects throughout the county, that money will continue to decline. Debt Retirement Fund is proposed to increase to 9,871,706. And that's combined schools and county, it is not utility. That's a 666,879,872 increase. Caroline Detention Fund is going to decrease from 2,74,898 down to 956,857. We don't, we had built up some money there, we are on a fixed with what we we make per month. So there was no way to continue to support that level of transfer every year, wouldn't have that in the fund. So we're down more into a manageable area of what we have to transfer.
Mr. Colley, just a quick question about both of those funds. That's just what we're pulling out of those funds? Those funds have different balances of what's there?
The detention fund?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the proffers fund?
Oh, yeah, proffers got, yeah, that's just what I proposed to transfer out of proper fund, yeah. Much, much, yes, yes. You have to spend proper money based on various things. So one of the things, one of the things that's allowed is transportation and seeing we're paying debt on Ladysmith Road for that VDOT payment that I couldn't save up quite enough money for, and we financed 2.3 or 4 million. So I'm going to pay some of that debt service with some proper money because it's supporting all that area of transportation. And yeah, then CDF, that's a monthly, fixed monthly amount now under our new contract with ICE. So that's, you kind of plan what you can do and can't do with that.
Thank you.
Enterprise changes in enterprise and capital projects funds. Caroline Utilities Funds is increasing 10,801,959. It's an increase of 275,570. I looked right at a number and something else comes out of my mouth, very interesting. Dawn Utility Fund, as we just discussed, 446,787 in 2425 to 502,489. It's about 55,702 increase. Capital Project Fund, the general fund capital projects, increasing to 3,451,491, 719,700 change. Some of that I am proposing to have a borrowing for. And we get into the details that I can show you that breakdown. Some of it, I'd hoped to do all of it from just out of the fund balance because of our fund balance growth. But due to some of the school projects and some of the discussions the board's had, I decided maybe I better put some money in for a borrowing. But there may be, as we're working with our new accountant and finance, I may have some more money that'll be available coming into our fund balance from SNAP. So as we work further on that, I may not need that borrowing, so may have some additional cash to use on some things. School capital projects, last year in '25 was 11,986,19. As you can see, that's reduced down to 979,862 because in '25 it was the funding for CMS, HVAC and multiple energy savings products that ran that up significantly. Mr. Black asked Allen to prepare this, so I added this in work we did on surrounding tax rates. So you can see we adopted at 52 cent, King and Queen is at 52 cent. Keep in mind, I worked in King and Queen, they have a landfill that provides them millions of dollars of additional revenue a year. Goochlin at 53 cent per hundred, Essex at 55. Orange, they break their rate into fire and rescue and general fund, they're 51 and 17. But their equalized rate is, this is, as you can see, asterisk, is 58 cent combined. So they're 10 cent over their equalized rate, they just came out of a reassessment. King William is proposed 61 and a half cent and they're currently at 58. New Kent is proposing 62, they're currently at 59, they have not adopted yet. King George is at 68. Louisa is at 72, but they're going to provide a 2 cent rebate. Sponsivania is at 73 cent, 4.3, you know, whatever you're, however you read cents in 4.3. But anyway, 73 and almost a half cent. Pow 10 is at 75, Hanover is at 81 and Stafford is at 92 and a third, for lack of a better way to read 3/6. So just to give you an idea of the surrounding tax rates and keep in mind, houses have different values and counties have landfills, Louisa has a nuclear power plant. There are various other things that some of these surrounding counties have that we don't. So we're certainly right in line with what we're providing.
Mr. Colley, I know it's probably a lot of work, but is it possible to get debt service numbers for all these localities? Because I think.
I can certainly try, see what we can find and make some calls. I can certainly try, see what we can find and make some calls, see what we can do.
Yeah, Stafford has, Stafford has a lot of school buildings that they're doing, right?
Probably, yeah.
There's going to be a lot of debt service there. Same with Spotsylvania, so.
But the other difference is their one cent of real estate.
Oh yeah, correct.
Raises tremendous more than our ones.
A lot of them were a million, two million, five years ago. So now that we've gone up from 300, they're probably two million.
One cent per 2 million. So when you, when you look.
Stafford?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, and that makes a tremendous difference when you look at that and you're saying, you know, they've got school projects. But what they actually have access to with one cent is tremendous.
Well, I think the other thing too, if I may add, is the fact that if you look at a medium home value in Spotsylvania, I mean, I think we just got medium home value in Spotsylvania is going to be more than it is in Caroline.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
And so they're being taxed at a higher rate. They're being taxed at a higher rate and their, their home value is higher.
Higher value.
Yeah, right. So it's going to, it's going to have, and, and it's going to have a bigger impact on their wallet than, than, um, than here in Caroline.
That's why they're preventing values, more. They've got, you know, more businesses, more, more this, more of that.
And that's why they're moving here.
Correct.
Mr. Cully?
Yes, sir.
Isn't, isn't it very difficult to look at only the tax rate to determine how well you're doing in terms of servicing your, your, uh, citizens when in actuality it's about the revenue you can generate within your, your county or your entity determines how much revenue you have to spend. So you, you can't compare Caroline and Spotsylvania in terms of, of, um, tax rate because they're, they're two different animals. It's like apples and oranges.
They're correct. Mr. Mr. Black asked us to, to do this research and, and have this for you tonight with it. So that, that we were just going through that. We're not trying to say that we're better or not. I mean, because there are, there are a number of value variables in everybody's tax situation.
And that's why the one cent of real estate.
But it gives, it gives people the impression that because our rate is 52 cent adopted and theirs is 78, we can go up to 78 cents. That, that's not comparable.
Oh no, I'm not saying we could go up at all.
I know you're not, but it's giving people an, uh, impression that that's the case, that we're not, they're not being taxed enough and that's not the case.
I, the idea is to show the tax burden and it shows it. When you look at the tax burden on the, the citizens, if you look at it from that perspective, it shows tax burden. It does. It's a math, it's a math formula. It shows in Spotsylvania, if the house is higher value and their tax rate is higher, it shows the tax burden in Spotsylvania. It is apples to apples. When you look at tax burden, yes, it is. It's, it's showing, it's just a math formula. It has nothing else to do with just what the tax burden of the citizen in each county is. That's what it's showing you. It, what their bill is going to be in Spotsylvania is going to be higher than it is in Caroline based on just pure numbers.
Gentlemen, you two can argue over this when you see one another again, but we're going to move on right now. I personally like to say that it means that we're doing good with how we handle everyone's money when it comes into Caroline and that we pay attention when we have to, to charge fees and we do our best to make the penny stretch. And that's an old saying my mom used to have. So we'll make the penny stretch and if we can keep it at 52 or 53, whatever, and not what some of our, uh, neighbors have, that's fine with me. So we will move on now.
All right, wonderful. Um, uh, Budget Process recap, um, in consideration today. So, uh, budget introduced tonight, May 13th. You pick some work sessions and key dates. We've advertised, uh, uh, the public hearing on the tax rates was held and, uh, tax rates adopted on the 23rd. Real estate increased two cents from the equalized rate to, from 50 cent to 52 per hundred dollar assessed value. Um, we've advertised a public hearing from May 27th, your next regular meeting on the budget and the CIP as required by code. And the board cannot adopt that night or approve the budget. They have to wait seven days, which will put us to the, uh, June, uh, 10th regular meeting for budget adoption and appropriation. So that's our targets based on whenever you want to add any, uh, work sessions in, public hearing is advertised for May 27th. It's, uh, scheduled to be advertised today and May 20th in the 25 additions of the Freelance Star. So I'm pretty sure that was my last slide. So that's what I have for tonight and where we are and where we, we've handed out, uh, and, uh, the printed copy and I can get you, uh, it's, it's not really in a, it's in Excel, but it's in, it's, it's 20, 2865 individual rows in Excel. So it's no subtotals. There's none of that. You've just got to do all that for yourself because it all flat filed out of OpenGov. It came from Keystone to OpenGov to me. Um, so it's basically, everything is in Keystone. So that's the report I printed out for you. It's got all the subtotals and it does have the, the increase or decrease in each line item, um, in every, every line. Like I said, 2,800 and I think 68 lines within the budget. The only thing that's not included in that is we are physical agent for Hannibal, uh, Caroline Soil and Water. And that's about 600 and some thousand dollars, but it's a hundred percent reimbursed and we have a, uh, 6,500 dollar admin fee. We do to recover our costs for doing their payroll. Um, and obviously we provide benefits and all that, but we're completely a hundred percent reimbursed on that. So that is the overview of the, uh, budget. You can see it's pretty much in just a few line items that, uh, make up the bulk of the increase. Some things have gone down, but most things have gone up. We've tried to capture everything in the sheriff's office. You know, we had appropriate additional money for various fuel and things in the sheriff's office. I think I've tried to capture all that. So with that, unless you have some questions.
Did you mention what the one penny in, in tax increase represented in revenue?
I didn't. We went over that. It's about 550,000, 550, 554, 648. Up from 325, 350.
And that's, that's really just for the people listening or watching it. So the two cent tax increase generates about a million dollars in addition, 1.1 million.
Right. And plus we had new construction. So we, you'll see, um, one of the very first pages in, in that's general fund revenue. You'll see that, that I think in the, going off of memory, 1.7 million, uh, real estate additional, uh, proposed in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cully. Does anyone have any other questions? So, 7:30. All right. Now we are at the George Washington Regional Commission Rural Technical Advisory Committee. Are we having a presentation?
Mr. Hughes and Mr. Robinson said they wanted to, uh, volunteer for this. They did. It's in the packet. They did. So I make a motion that they, they volunteer.
Second.
All right. We have a, a motion.
Right.
For Mr. Hughes and.
Mr. Robinson.
And Mr. Rob, Brad Robinson to serve on this Rural Technical Advisory Committee. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So moved. Consent agenda. Is there any item that would like to be, um, pulled or discussed? If not, I will take a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So we are at, uh, 7:48 and would we like to take a break now before public comments or do public comments? Okay, we are going to move on with public comments.
Then we'll take a break.
For, then we'll take a break. All right. Public comment is a period of time where if there is a topic you would like to, um, make a comment on to the board, that is your time. You have three minutes. You would name your, uh, voting district and your, your name. We don't want your, your address place. And this can be of any topic unless it is something that is coming up for public hearing tonight or in the near future or some, uh, what's my other condition? Is that it? Or if we've already had a public hearing on, on the topic. So remembering that, if there's anyone who would like to come up and, uh, address the board, please come forward at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elaine Green and I am from the Reedy Church District.
Welcome, Ms. Green.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to bring up a couple of things that I'm concerned about. I, um, moved here to Caroline County about five years ago. And one of the things that, um, I've noticed and really I've started paying attention to is how far I need to travel to go grocery shopping. So where I live, um, at 30 and 301, I either have to travel 12 or 14 miles north to go to a Food Lion in Bowling Green or, uh, travel that same distance or farther south to go to Ashland or Mechanicsville. And I'm just wondering, like with all of the, um, discussions of data centers and all the other things that we're thinking about bringing into the county, are there any, um, discussions about just bringing a grocery store into an area that, um, could make it possible for people to not have to drive 14 or 16 miles to go to a grocery store? And I realize I live in a rural area, but I just wanted to bring that up. That's one concern. And then I wanted to, uh, bring to the attention to see if we could get, um, some focus on a family, uh, that lives on 301, um, just past, like Don Convenience. It's the trucking company that if you're traveling south on 301, they have lots of, uh, dump trucks parked on the right-hand side in front of a family's home. Um, I don't know if I'm allowed to say what their last name is, so I'll leave it out unless you ask me for it. But it's creating a really, um, dangerous situation for them to enter and exit their own driveway to get onto 301, whether going north or south, because the trucks, uh, present, um, a barrier to them being able to have a straight line of sight to exit or enter the property. And I know because I've gone down to visit and it's been very dangerous to enter or exit their property. So I just wanted to bring those two things to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak at this moment? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name is David Cooper. I live in the Reedy Church District. I'm delighted to be here this evening to thank this board for its support for the Brisbane Center and its long-term service over 36 years of serving the homeless folks of Caroline County and actually across all the Planning District 16. I also wanted to bring to the board's attention that across the Planning District, there are over a thousand schoolchildren that are considered homeless. In Caroline County, at most recent count, 45 children, just children, are considered homeless in the public school system. So there's a real challenge. At the Brisbane Center, we seek to address these families of children. We want to help those families get on their feet again and be successful reentrance into the community. So we've been at this for 36 years. I wanted again, thank you for your support of the Brisbane Center.
Were you sitting there the whole time, Mr. Cooper?
He was.
Were you sitting there the whole time when I asked for more money?
Yes, sir. I was.
Oh, I didn't see you. So it was purely coincidental. Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your.
Yeah, uh, we, I mean, we have, we have communicated before, so that's part of why. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Chairwoman Long and Board, um, thank you for allowing me to speak a few minutes this, this, this evening. My name is Joseph James and I vote in there, in the Magisterial District of Reedy Church. I'm coming for you this evening to, to express several concerns that we have about, uh, having our community in the lower part of Caroline. From Interstate 95 all the way over to 301 headed westbound towards West Point, there's a lot of traffic that's on that road. You all are aware that the State Fair of Virginia is held there along with other events during the year. My concern is, um, the, the markings in the interstate there have people passing in curves and passing coming down hills. From Signboard to Secretariat is a very dangerous situation where they're immediately after you cross the crest of the hill, coming away from Signboard, heading, um, eastbound, cars, uh, a, a passing tractor and trailers. A motorcycle might be riding behind a car and as, as soon as they cross the crest of that hill, they're running 65 and 70 miles per hour. I would love to hear the Sheriff Department and, and other law enforcement officials be, uh, more aware of that and have maybe patrol cars patrol that road more often. Also, um, there's a concern about, um, trees and branches that overlap entrances from the side roads on Route 30. Signboard being one, uh, Secretariat being the other, Sadie Lane and some other, um, private residences that are entering Route 30 from, uh, Metal Event Park all the way up to, uh, 301. Also, I'd like to make reference to, uh, several accidents that have happened on Route 30. A matter of fact, right at Secretariat today, I think more than two months ago, there was a serious car accident there that has basically taken out the guard rail, um, as the entrance from, into Secretariat from Route 30. I was wondering where VDOT is and where those repairs have not been made yet. Again, um, other roadways seem to get repaired before those roads in the lower part of Caroline. You know, I live in the Dawn area. We want the same representation and the tax dollars spent there as other places in the county. Again, I thank you all for your time. Please consider addressing those traffic issues between Metal Event Park and, and, um, he, heading west towards, uh, King, King, King William County on, on Route 30. Again, it would be tragic for me to come here and say something about a loss of life because these issues have not been addressed. Again, I thank you for your, um, time. And also I'd like to emphasize that there is a serious concern about that trucking company with those dump trucks parked on, um, Route, uh, Route 301. 11, 12, 15 dump trucks and people are actually enforcing the law, well, not enforcing the law, but stepping into the roadway to stop traffic to allow these trucks to back up and move in and out of that property. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Hello, Madam Long and esteemed Board. Um, I wanted to come by tonight. My name is Jason. I'm with Central Rapid River Habitat for Humanity. And I've been watching on the sidelines for, since I, I started working here, um, years now, this whole rapid water tap situation. And I wanted to peel back another layer of the onion to, to add something to the dialogue that I think is really relevant for everybody to understand. And this is a problem that is throughout our nation, not just Caroline. But the median home price in this county is now $369,000. Rule of thumb means you need to make $123,000 to afford a home. Or you need to have about $80,000 down payment. That excludes most citizens of this county. If we do not tap that river, those numbers will go up and homeownership will become bleak. And this county, only the very wealthy will benefit. So I just want to share with you that I support what you're doing. It makes me emotional because I see and I know how homeownership changes people's lives. And you guys picked a good fight and the common sense people at the county will stand behind you and you will see it when it comes to Election Day. The tap needs to happen. So I commend you and I support you and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? You please come forward at this time. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Patricia Hatcher. I'm, um, from the Reedy Church, um, District and I'm here to voice my concern of the roadway. I live off of, um, Secretariat Road, um, which I actually live off of Big Oak Drive, but Secretary Road off of, um, Route 30. And the roadways are horrific. Um, I don't know the last time the road has been paved. Um, there's been a lot of patchwork. Um, but I'm here to request that the road actually be paved and, uh, brought up to, uh, a standard where my car and others in the community are not having to dodge potholes, large potholes. Um, so this is my request and I ask that you take that into consideration that the road off of Secretariat, um, actually be paved and not just patched and repaired. I have no idea the last time that it was repaired, um, to, I guess, anyone's standard, uh, with the condition that it's in right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, public comment period is now closed.
And Nancy, you may want to mention that we do have a quarterly meeting with VDOT and, and they should probably be here in June or July.
Yeah.
Handle the roads.
And on the road issue, Mr. Thomas asked me to say that is a VDOT issue. They do meet with us quarterly. They should be here the next couple of months. But in the meantime, I'll make a couple of calls and, and see. Because, yeah, I know all about waiting for guardrails because I waited for one down near where I live for over, gosh, going on two years, I guess. But, um, we will report these things to them and you certainly can come back when you see that they are on the agenda.
Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to offer, um, they do have an eight-hundred number and it's one eight-hundred, three six seven, seven six two four. That, that spells out four as an F-O-R, road, R-O-A-D. And that is a, that is a, that's what they actually, the VDOT representative told me to use, um, to call in if there's a pothole or something, uh, wrong with the road, roadway that they need to be aware of. That is something that they've, they've advised us, so I'm advising y'all as well. We can all use the same, same system, but it's out there if, uh, if you'd like to make a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. That's good information. At this time, we are going to take a fifteen-minute break and then we will be, um, back, uh, for our public hearings. Thank you all. We'll see you soon.
At this time, I'd like to reconvene the board meeting. And we are on public hearings, starting with number four, adoption of the VDOT fiscal year 2026, fiscal year 2031 secondary six, uh, six-year improvement plan and road construction budget. So where are we at? That's a lot of stuff to go over.
So good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So tonight, we're here for the public hearing for the adoption of SSYP, uh, plan, secondary six-year plan. Uh, this plan was reviewed with the transportation committee. And because of the limited allocations, the transportation committee recommended that, uh, the funds be allocated, that are allocated be reserved for supplemental years, um, to kind of bank those funds up a little bit. Uh, the committee also did recommend that the scope of the Devil's Three Jump project, which is in the plan, uh, be reduced or amended to approximately 300 feet from the intersection, um, at the entrance, uh, of the first parking lot on Devil's Three Jump Road. Uh, reducing the scope of this project will allow the project to be completed this summer. Um, and then we can also reassess, uh, in the future if we need to extend that, that lane. So with me tonight is, uh, Rick Spurlock from, uh, VDOT, and he is our VDOT representative that is responsible for our six-year plan. Um, as you can see, there are a limited amount of funds, uh, in the plan, um, as we noted. And so, you know, carrying those funds over for future years is, uh, what we, what the transportation committee recommended. So Rick is here, can certainly answer any questions if you have any, and I'll ask them as well.
All right. We probably have questions, I would think. Um, but, uh, so thank you for coming and being on the hot seat since apparently, um, person I normally see here is probably busy at home with his kids and, uh, and doesn't want to talk to us tonight, but please take back the messages you heard from our citizens about trimming and issues. Um, and, um, someone can give me a call to let me know they got the message. I would appreciate that. So these two secondary road, um, projects, um, right now, we're just gonna do, uh, the Farmer's Drive. And does that go all the way back to the end or just where it gets to the edge of the woods in the back?
Uh, good evening, uh, Rick Spurlock from Fredericksburg residency, VDOT. Uh, so the second project on there, uh, the Farmer Drive is the one that was already completed. That was the project to take the Y intersection into a T intersection. Uh, so it is complete, but we can't take it off of this list yet because all the books hadn't been closed and transfers and all this kind of stuff.
You also approved it all the way back to the end of the hardtop, didn't you? Did you?
Is this Farmers or Caroline?
Farmers.
Uh, no, that project was just for the intersection. I think the rest of Farmers is in the system already, I believe.
Yeah, it'd be nice if you'd re-topped them both, done the whole thing instead of stopping right there at the V. Cause the last time I drove by there, they were through that, which has been a year or two ago. There were some cracks and pots and so I thought they would have repaved the whole, whole road. So we're not taking the whole Farmer's Drive in just where the V was put in?
Uh, so yes, it's, it's already in the system. There was another item on the agenda before to remove part of it. And that's the, that's the difference in the length of the Y and then the T intersection. So that's just being removed from the system.
Right. And, um, and I certainly have no problem with the second row, which is Caroline Street. Since that's my district and that has been paved, uh, one coat. And I think they said they would be back this year for a second coat on that since it's tar and gravel.
Correct.
So those are, are my two questions. And I will open it up to the board for any other questions. No other questions? All right. We will open the public hearing. Thank you very much. If there's anyone who would like to make comments right now on the adoption of the six-year secondary plan, uh, please come forward at this time with your statements. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this project? Seeing none, hearing none, this public, uh, hearing is closed. All right.
I have a question before we go to adopt that. Mr. Spurlock, are you, and I, I know it's kind of an extra, but I was trying to look it up on my email, but the public hearing was too fast. You also are responsible for traffic counts, right?
Um, just to like verify roadway is, uh, qualify for to be hard-surfaced.
Right.
Uh, but those counts are already in a system we have called Virginia Roads where we can look up all that kind of stuff.
But if there was an issue, I, I could come to you.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I really wanted to know. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Motion to approve the, uh, secondary six-year plan, which is all of two roads.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Voters unanimous. Takes us to our second public hearing. ACT Holdings LLC owner applicant. Mr. Hughes, you handle this. Now Craig's handling this one.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Your public hearing case tonight, SPEX 01 2025, ACT Holdings for Stone Manufacturing. I'm, I'm not getting anything. Can I see it? All right. Thank you, David. Excuse me. The applicant's requesting approval of a special exception permit for manufacturing of stone and shale products, brick and tile and concrete products pursuant to Article 10, Section 3.8 of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The subject property is located in Lady Smith Industrial Park on tax map number 52D dash two dash 25, at the northeast corner of Commerce Way and Center Drive. The portion of Lady Smith Industrial Park nearest Lady Smith Road is owned B1 commercial, while the rear portion of the industrial park is owned M1 for industrial uses. The subject property is adjacent to vacant parcels of approximately one acre of M1-zoned land, manufacturing to the east and south. An HVAC contractor is located across Commerce Way to the southeast, and a tow service storage lot is located directly across Center Drive in the northwest corner of the intersection. The property to the north is approximately 77 acres of M1-zoned vacant land designated by the comprehensive plan for future commercial and industrial development. Next slide. All right. I'll just continue without the presentation since we're having some issues. Um, so site plan for a tenant building with seven tenant spaces was approved in July of 2024. Five of the spaces are front-loaded and accessed by an entrance from Commerce Way. And so if you look at your screen, the front of the building has five tenant spaces there and is accessed from the south on Commerce Way. And then there are two tenant spaces in the rear that are accessed off Center Drive towards the rear of the parcel. Special exception request is for Stone Manufacturer to occupy one of the rear accessed spaces. The proposed stone manufacturing business provides custom countertop products. The use will not have a showroom or pickup of finished products. All design work is done at the location of the installation and the finished product is delivered. All of the finishing work will be conducted wholly within the building. The use will utilize a closed-loop water system for the stone cutting. A water tank will be filled once and all water used during the stone cutting is recycled through a filter system and reused. Other than the initial fill-up of the tank and topping off of the tank periodically to replace evaporated water, there will be no additional demand on the public utility water system. All stone dust created from the stone cutting operation is collected via vacuum system on the saws, bagged and sold or given to other businesses who utilize stone dust. And staff offers the following conditions for the board supervisors to consider if there is a recommendation of approval. The two which shall be recorded in Circuit Court within 30 days. Uh, any outdoor storage shall be screened by opaque fencing. No storage of debris or surplus material from the manufacturing process shall be stored outside. All manufacturing processes shall take place within a fully enclosed building or structure. Shipping containers shall not be used as an accessory storage structure, and a fire hydrant shall be installed at the entrance located on Center Drive prior to commencing operation. This condition was requested by fire rescue and the planning commission added condition six for fire rescue. Uh, all necessary plans and permits shall be reviewed and approved for installation. The planning commission held a public hearing on March 27th, 2025. There was no public comment during the public hearing, and the planning commission motioned for this application to the board supervisors with a recommendation of approval. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I believe the applicant is here for questions also.
Mr. Forehand.
Uh, condition two, I think, the storage of debris. Does something being in a dumpster, is that considered storage?
Not if it's in a dumpster, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Having seen the questions right now from the board, we will open the public hearing. Uh, Mr., I'm sorry, the applicant, would you like to speak? You said the applicant was here. If you'd like to come forward and speak at this time, you are welcome. Hello.
Good evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you had any questions.
While I answer, is this your first time opening a business like this or do you have other businesses?
So we're actually the owner of the building, not the tenant.
And I have one question from someone who said, the, the question was, with the industrial in the back, is that going to affect the offices in the front if, because those are smaller buildings for, what type of tenants are you expecting to attract up there?
Uh, so right now, we have a couple of tenants that are gonna be basically utilizing the small office space. They're gonna be small contractor-type businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. If there is anyone that would like to come up and speak on this, uh, hearing, this is the time to come forward. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. What questions?
I have questions.
Mr. Sealy.
The drawing we have delineates nothing but storage and offices. I mean, this is the public record document for what we're gonna put into this facility. And I think it should delineate what's going where in the building. Um, we're gonna put a manufacturing and we're gonna have a, a car garage or, or auto repair in the back. But I, this drawing, all it shows is offices and storage. And I think since they're asking for a special exception, that that should have been delineated on this because this becomes the public record for special exception. At least notionally, even if it was marked on here notionally, what they wanted to do, it should have been delineated on this because I don't have any idea what this is actually showing anybody other than it could be office space. But we're asking, it's being asked to be a special exception for industrial on the backside of this. So I, I, I don't know about anybody else, but we're, we're looking at something that is delineating industrial, but all we're showing is B1 business or office. And I think it should delineate what's going in there as, as part of the record that, of what's going on here.
If I may.
Mr. Forehand.
We have, and, and that same office or commercial park, we've kind of jumped back and forth. We do have some little, some more M1 uses in that office park. It's not just all B business.
Correct.
I think it was initially business. It was built before I was here, but I think it was initially business and then we had some uses that were required exception. For some reason, I thought we'd had, so we had allowed, that it wasn't an issue for us to, for the, for a tenant to be, you know, like, uh, we have, I think we had some, uh, some trim manufacturers, some case goods that was being, being built back there, maybe still are. And, and what's drive, is the, is the stone, the countertop, that's what's driving the, the M1, the special exception?
So the back half of the industrial park is owned M1, the front half closer to Lady Smith Road is B1. So surrounding this property is all M1, which is you have your HVAC contractor, a tow service lot, uh, Evans Heating and Air. uh, Evans Heating and Air, um, similar business, M one businesses. Uh, in the M one district, the manufacturer of stone and shale products, uh, requires a special exception. And so, that's why they could not go in there. Um, another use like a welding shop would be by right. Um, but stone and shale is, is special exception, so that's why it's required.
Okay. So, that was just specifically excluded from the by right? Rightly or wrongly or intentionally or not, at, at, okay. But the auto does, does not require special exception and then what?
The auto that's the next case will require a special exception as well.
Alright. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Thomas, did I see your light on?
I, I did change my mind, thank you.
I, I have another. So, in the planning commission, there was a question that was asked to consider commercial vehicles as referenced in the staff report for the auto repair. And the answer back was the building code requirement, so that it's up to the building official whether there's commercial vehicles in this garage?
Yes, so the building official commented that they could not service commercial vehicles and the question from the planning commission was what qualifies as a commercial vehicle, such as the Mary made cars that aren't exactly commercial vehicles. We got clarification from the building official, his comment on it could not service commercial vehicles was directed at buses or dump trucks, large-scale commercial vehicles. Uh, commercial vehicles such as landscaping pickup trucks or like the Mary made cleaning cars, they would not be considered commercial vehicles by the building code.
And to expand on it, the building code dictates different requirements for those different levels of vehicles. So, if you get to those larger vehicles, then the building code dictates more, uh, improvements on the interior to service those vehicles, so.
But I didn't see any answers and, I mean, I, I'm reading this just the way it's presented. And I called Mr. Schwartz to ask him about some of this because I'm reading what I've got in front of me. And again, I still don't understand where in this building anything's going. And I, and I think it should, again, this is public record, we're, we're approving a special exception for, for two facilities in this building, they should have been at least delineated. What's front, what's back? Mrs. Long actually told me that there's gonna be a soundproof wall between the two of them. It's, it's, it's not written anyplace. And again, the building official reference in here, there should have been somewhere in this that it was actually answered for us because if it's in here, I didn't see.
So, so Mr. Sealy, the, the, the plan you're looking at is a, an interior layout plan. That, this is a shell building. This would be no different if this was a McDonald's. We don't dictate at the land use stage what the interior of a McDonald's looks like. So, in a tenant build-out situation, when you have a shell building, when this gentleman's, uh, tenant comes to apply for his building permit, their building permit will show exactly the build-out of the interior of that building. That, for that use, it will have to meet all the building code requirements for that particular use. Just like on the auto side, there will be some different requirements for that side of the tenant build-out as well. We don't ever put in interior build-outs for shell buildings.
But I don't ever get a special exception on a shell building that's gonna have, that we have to do special exceptions on. McDonald's is McDonald's, it's a restaurant, it's B one. I, I mean, so, I'm just trying to do apples to apples. We're doing a special exception and all I wanna know is where this, where those two facilities are going and what they are and what they're, because all I see is office space and storage. None of which answers either the questions that the special exception is making that's been applied for. And the staff has been through it. Nobody said anything in a staff report about, until Mrs. Long showed me, I didn't even realize it was new construction.
So, we typically don't say anything about the interior of buildings during a staff report. Because like I said, it's a shell building. There's a building, an entire building code that deals with it. This is not, the interior building is not the land use issue. The land use issue is if this used to be appropriate at this location. So, from a language perspective, we don't get into what goes into the interior of the building.
Mr., uh, Mr. Hughes.
Go ahead, Mr. Forehand.
I, I think, um, it took me a minute to catch on to where, where, where your mind was, but I think I, I think I know where you are now. It's a multi-tenant space and then how do we know five years down the road what we actually approve for the special exception and what we didn't? I think that's the delineation that he is seeking. Uh, because we do, I mean, it is proposed to have eight, seven or eight different tenant spaces and if we're doing it by space, then we would need that to know which one we're blessing. Or are we doing the whole building?
So, conceivably, if, let's say this, his other tenants went away. Let's say the car dealership or repair chose not to locate here. Conceivably, then this, this stone manufacturer, stone cutting company could have the entire space.
And that's not something we, if, if they were, if we were to delineate, you know, one of the larger or even say the back half and their business just goes bonkers and they want the whole building, would they be required to come back to say, alright, now I'm, I was gonna take two thousand square feet, now I'm taking two thousand more, now I got fourth, I'm taking the whole building? Did they have to come back and, and get those other spaces that were proposed, even though they may not be built out? How does, how does that, how does that play out in, in reality?
No, they wouldn't because in that instance, the special exception is for that interior space. And so, it's on that parcel, they could expand if they became the only tenant, then they could expand the interior. I mean, that, that's something we would hope that would happen, honestly, because that means somebody's being successful. And then we wouldn't necessarily bring them back to this process. I mean, you know, our ordinance is set up with a lot of uses that are typically by right uses in commercial areas or industrial areas like this. They aren't doing anything outside that would be obnoxious or create any objections or objectionable, uh, any objectionable activities, I'll say. And so, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't make them come back and go through the process. We think the conditions that we've, uh, recommended would cover anything that could happen in terms of, you know, storage outside. That's typically where you'd have a nuisance issue would be relative to storage.
Parking, storage.
Parking, storage. If they expanded to two thousand and took the whole space, then you might wanna see somebody try to put shipping containers to deal with the excess inventory. So, we've conditioned that they can't do that. And so, that interior space would become, you know, their interior storage. And like I said, it, it is, it's not a land use issue in terms of the interior space. We have, prime example, we have a, it's a by right use, a doctor's office going, potentially going into a shopping center. They're gonna come in and get a building permit to redo the interior of that space and start seeing patients in there. It's the same thing here. If they, if these two uses fail and a restaurant wants to come along, they have to apply for a permit. They come and get the permit, the interior renovations are done to support a restaurant and then that becomes the use. So, you know, the interior of the building is man-managed by the building code.
Okay. I just think that, looking at the other buildings that were built in this, in this same area, every, at least my recollection, and I do drink sometimes, so I do forget. But they, they always came for a, a designated space. You know, looking at the, the Evans building, uh, when they wanted to do the auto, auto repair in there, it was, alright, these two tenant spaces, what they were going for and, um.
And the tow lot did the same thing. They came with their fenced-in area and they were gonna be a towing facility. And we saw all that in the drawings.
It's, it's just different. I don't, I don't, and I'm, I'm listening. I just, I don't know of a better way to do it off the top of my head, but I'll, it's also different than what we've been presented in the past.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Hughes, the, the site plan approval that you referenced before, they've gotta come back, get a site plan approval, which will have parking and all those things. They don't.
The, the site plan is approved. What they'll have to come back and get now are permits for the interior, uh, build-out.
So, when they do, when they come to apply for a building permit, you'll actually see the building floor plan?
That is correct.
Is that your opportunity to say, no, this doesn't work or yes, it's fine or is it pretty much automatic?
No, the use will be allowed. The building official will determine if the, what the interior renovations have to be to support this use.
Because that's based on code.
That's based on code.
And not zoning.
That is correct.
So, once we get past zoning, you're finished. And then it goes to the building official and he says, based on the code, you can have A, B and C in here, in this section of the building, X, Y and Z, in the next section of the building.
And if they do something that is beyond what is approved, then he will say, oh, wait a minute. You're gonna add X, Y and Z, it's gonna require, he's gonna come to us and say, hey, is this use allowed? This expansion of use is that allowed? And then we would say, no.
Yes or no.
Right, yes or no, correct.
If they were a third tenant space or a third business that wanted to locate in this building beside the other two that have already pursued special exceptions, they would also have to seek out a specialist, a special exception.
It depends on what it is. If it's a by right use.
Right. If it's, if it's not on the list of by right.
But if it's another industrial use, they could move right in and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't know.
No, I don't think so.
If, if it's an, if it's an industrial use that is a by right use, they could move in. If it's an industrial use that requires a special exception, then they would have to get a special exception. This special exception is specifically for the stone cutting business and the next one is specifically for the auto repair business, which are the two tenants that wanna go in right now. If these two tenants go away and a by right tenant shows up, the by right tenant could go in just as well.
Go right in.
But they will still go through the same process of getting a building permit to build out the interior. What you have in your plan is, it's just a schematic of a potential layout. And that was a part of their site plan and that was put in as a result, so that the utilities folks could see where potential connections could be within the building.
I think, if I could, I think the main hang-up here is, and maybe the solution is just to request that if this is, uh, approved tonight, that in the files, a diagram will be marked as to the area they are applying for now, those, those two bays, those two areas. You know, mark it out in color. I don't know what you do with it, but right now, what's in the package, you don't really know what section of that building is allowed to do this. So, twenty years down the road, if somebody pulls out what's in the packet now, they're not gonna know it was just to look at schematics. They're gonna say, oh, did they get it, you know, is this business taking all this space or can they expand this far without any more permits? So, maybe we just ask that you put a colored or more viable map of the area that this business is gonna go into in the plant and the.
The only thing I would offer to that is, is that if we do that, if you, if you limit them to a specific space, then they have no opportunity to expand without coming back to the board and going through this process all over again. And so, that, that was the only I'd say. It just, it just adds another layer to the process.
Well, can we just get a map without just showing that they are, this is where they are going to? Not that they can't expand or they can't go out of business, which hopefully they won't, but maybe they wanna expand, but at least we know where they are in that building.
So, when they apply for their building permit, that's exactly what will happen. They will show on their building permit where this particular use is going to go, where the next tenant space will be in, within that building. And that will become a part of the tax parcel file and it will be on file in our office. So, there will, there is a record of what they initially apply for, where they initially go and then who comes in. The other thing is, let's say there's another use that comes in and for whatever reason, they have more intense code requirements in a, in another tenant space. The, the building official is gonna say, okay, now this more intense use is coming in, they, there may need to be some improvements to the interior walls. Let's say they have to do some, add some fire separated, uh, separation rated interior walls, then they would have to do that. So, the interior is regulated by the building code based on the use. Like when I started this saying, when it talked about the commercial, uh, vehicles, the commercial vehicle code is much more intense than the standard vehicle code. So, there are requirements for air removal systems, sprinkler systems. There are a number of code requirements that are more intense, um, than just a regular, uh, passenger vehicle type repair.
If he was doing like a paint shop, an auto paint shop, he'd have to have extra ventilation and things like that.
He'd have a whole nother set of code requirements that he had to.
But that would still be part of the special exception. And, and we're approving the zoning and the uses that are allowed by zoning. Now, the owner of the building, because I see on the plan it says spec building, which is cool. But the owner of the building is gonna say, I've got the, the approval for this particular activity. You can come if you're that activity. This stone, this stone company may disappear tomorrow. But he could say, I found another stone company or I found another similar building or similar manufacturer that could move in right away.
That is correct.
We don't, we in terms of zoning, don't really, well, we care, but we don't have a lot of influence on how much space is used in the building for which tenant. That's purely up to the building official who's gonna say, you have this much space, you need this much fire protection or whatever. So, we're just doing zoning right now.
Yes, and, and, and to be, to, to clarify, we're not changing the zoning.
Correct.
Clear that we're not changing the zoning, we are just allowing a use.
We're doing a special exception to the zoning.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. I'm done.
Do I have?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mr. Underwood, yes.
Yeah, doesn't the, the code really dictate what goes into the building? So, he, he can't build out within the, within the structure, anything that's outside of the code for that building. Because he's not saying it's going to be X, Y or Z. If he wanted it to be used for something outside of the code, then it wouldn't be allowed. That's my understanding.
That is correct.
I think that's, I think that's what we're saying. If, as long as it's in the same manufacturing class or business class, we've approved a zoning for that class. But if he wants to come in and put a nuclear recycling facility in the back part of the building, he'd definitely have to come back for another special exception.
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna tell you now, you probably don't need to come back for that special exception.
Alright. Do I have a motion? Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I will move for approval of SPEX zero-one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Did I give the right number?
Yes, with the conditions as presented.
With conditions as presented. Thank you, Craig.
The six conditions.
Yes, conditions as presented. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Miss, by Mr. Thomas, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all passed. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. All opposed? So moved. Okay. Onward to number six.
Hey, you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, public hearing tonight, SPEX zero-two, twenty twenty-five, ACT Holdings Minor Auto Repair. Uh, I won't go through the layout of the property again as it's the exact same building. Uh, with this special exception, they are requesting minor auto repair instead of, uh, in addition to the stone manufacturer. Um, there was a minor auto repair special exception approved in twenty sixteen on the same parcel. Uh, that special exception expired, uh, as the owner did not actually commence the, uh, minor auto repair on this parcel. So, that was expired and, uh, so now we have another special exception request for auto repair on this parcel. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
How did that go away, Mr. Pennington?
Excuse me?
How did their special exception, the previous, um, auto repair facility, how did their special exception go away?
The zoning ordinance states that if you don't commence your special exception within eighteen months, which commencing your special exception is applying for a permit, uh, then it is void. And the previous special exception, uh, after being approved, they did have site plans approved, but they never actually built the building. And so, the special exception was void after eighteen months.
I wish we could do that for rezonings too. Wow, if, if the lawyer was a bobblehead, he would have broken his head just, I think he said no, but okay.
Alright, are there any questions from anyone on the board on this?
Assuming the questions will be just like the ones we just answered.
I think this would be a good advantage. I mean, a small minor repair service facility can be very handy back over that way. So, I move that we.
Public hearing.
Oh, pub, yes, I do have to open a public hearing, it's getting so, so uh thin out there. At this time, I will open public hearing, S P E X O two twenty twenty five Act Holding um for a special exception. If anyone would like to speak on this topic, please come forward at this time. This is for approval of a minor vehicle repair facility. So anyone who would like to speak at this time. Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Now, any other questions? If not, I move that for approval of S P E X zero.
Second.
I was gonna make the second.
And we got a second for Mister Black, thank you, with conditions as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. New business. Who has one? Who has the next one? Number seven.
Seven we canceled. Do, do we, do we need a presentation on eight? We need a presentation on eight, cuz I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve number eight, which is the proposed amendment to section eleven four of the Caroline County Policies and Procedures Manual.
For bereavement leave.
For bereavement leave. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? So moved.
Excellent presentation.
Request for the town of Bowling Green. Joey, are you got this one?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. The topic of discussion on this agenda item is a request from the town of Bowling Green to accept the sludge from their wastewater treatment plant at our facility. So staff uh looked into that uh in, into the feasibility of that, and, and long story short is, is that our facility can't handle that amount of sludge on a regular basis. Um, we have limited that we can only accept septicage from county residents only, because we can't handle outside um sludge. And, and at this point, our facility is super busy with everything that we have coming in now, because other localities won't accept our septicage into their facility. So Spotsylvania has limited it now, King George has cut everybody off, Stafford has. So because of that, if they were, yes.
Um, I don't, I mean, maybe unless anyone wants discussions, I just don't see anything that's beneficial to us on this. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to deny the request from the town of Bowling Green for the, to accept bio-solids in the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Mister Black. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I was gonna say nay, cuz it's a town, and I don't know what else to tell them.
You could abstain. Okay, so we voice, voice, voice vote.
Nay.
Aye. Mr. Forehand.
Aye.
Aye.
Mister, Mister Underwood? I think we lost Mister. There we go.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Mister Underwood.
Thank you.
Motion pa, uh, motion to deny passes. Alright, go for it, although I think.
Good evening. The next agenda item is the memorial garden at the main recreation park. Um, if the board remembers, about ten years ago, we had a boy scout came looking for an Eagle Scout project. Um, he proposed to the school board about putting a memorial garden on school property. Um, the school um turned them to us. So he came to the county and asked the board of supervisors for permission to uh build a memorial park. Um, the thought was, is that he would memor, memorialize anyone that was uh either a member of staff or at the school that had passed away um throughout the years. Um, he ended up building the facility, put in a flagpole, some trees, some benches, put in a, a stoned area and a flagpole along with uh some memorial stones. Um, the first year or so, um, that got taken care of, he went off to college, he came back the, the next summer um and had some mulch donated and worked on it. And since then, it's really falling in disrepair um other than us trying to mow the grass around that area. Um, it was uh, the board inquired about ongoing maintenance. Um, and the presenter assured the board that the various school groups and clubs would be responsible for the upkeep, and that just doesn't, hasn't happened. Um, now it's fallen into such disrepair and no longer really represents the visible uh appealing appearance or the viability is really an eyesore um with everything we've done at the county park. Um, and, and either staff believes we either need to spend money to bring it up to some type of a service or remove it. Um, I do have some pictures in there uh of what it looks like now. Um, there's not a single name that was ever put on to any of the memorial bricks that were put in. Um, but we would, you know, i- if you decide to remove it, we would just remove the post and the benches that are there that are just disrepair and, and the, the bricks and remove that area and just make it into grass. We would leave the trees. Um, and if you wanna do that, we'd go back and work on a quote, go back in and, and upgrade the stone and put new stone in there and the post and, and chains and benches, if that's what the board wishes.
So Mister, uh, I'm sorry, so used to say a joke, Mister Sheeble, um, the, there are, you said there's no memorial markers. They look like there was something in one of the pictures.
There's bricks, but there's no name on the bricks. The idea was, is that they would put the student's name or the teacher's name on the actual brick and have those engraved um each of the names to, to be represented, but, and that never happened.
And there's no, uh, no one using the flagpole.
No.
Well, I think you, uh, looking at the pictures, I like the idea of taking everything out except for the tree and a usable bench or two and sitting them under the tree. So when somebody's playing tennis and I don't wanna play, I, or pickleball, I can sit in the shade and watch. So, uh, comments from anybody on the board?
The school, do the schools want anything to do with this?
They didn't originally. That's where this ended. This started at the schools and ended up in front of the board.
Okay.
Because the schools were, I think, afraid of the same issue, who was gonna maintain it.
And it ended up on county property.
Correct. And it, and that wa, and it was over maintenance. There's a reason that the schools at the time weren't interested in it, but it started at the school. I think that's where the request went to the school first. So, and that was our fear, if you go back and read what we brought in front of you was.
We remember that.
Yeah, maintenance.
I'll go ahead, make the motion that um we do what Miss Long said, is we um take up the bricks and just keep the trees around. Um, and then, cuz we just maintain that area anyway, it'll be grass. So just keep the trees that are there, and um everything else kinda goes away.
Now, what's the problem? Well.
If the benches are usable, I'd like a place to sit in the shade.
We will see if they're usable. Um, they might need to be sanded and redone. I, I know they've been out in the weather for ten years, so.
Mister Sheeble, what's the problem with the roundup around the bricks so that they would just stay as bricks and you could cut around them? Cut grass around them?
We could. It was, it, just the board said that it was gonna be those, the individual's responsibility to maintain it, so staff has not maintained it. So really, that was the question. Do you want us to go in and rehab that to make it look respectable? And then to maintain it from this point forward or remove it?
Alright, that is a good question, and apparently there's a motion to not do that, so.
Is there a second?
I, I, as far as Mister discussion, I'm gonna call this, this, uh, we have a seconds, right?
Motion was to remove it. Second now.
Okay. Um, as far as the bricks go, it's probably gonna cost, is it gonna cost more to remove them or more to mow around them?
We'll get those up and just put some topsoil back in there. I mean, it's very minimal to try to, to remove it and just kinda oversee the area and move the stone.
Okay, I would leave that decision up to you, whatever's gonna be easiest of maintenance.
Yeah, we'll turn it into a nice grassed area.
Is it, is it just the bricks that are in the picture? Or there are more bricks?
That's it. What you see, it's like a little pyramid.
Yeah.
Yep.
What are you gonna do with the, take the flagpole down?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, a ninety-nine dollar low special, it's not a fancy flagpole.
Yeah, let's put it all back into grass, guys. So what you think? Alright, you have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Request to name playground at Low Messy Park in honor of Mister Thomas Jimmy Fields and Mrs. Irene Fields. Mister Underwood, do you want to speak on this?
I'll, I'll make the second.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that um Mister Jimmy Fields was instrumental when they first opened up the old dawn school that we down to begin putting up a, a new facility. But in the meantime, we've upgraded the park considerably, and it's being used considerably in the, in the area. And uh, Miss uh Fields and uh Deacon Field have been married seventy-seven years. And one of the longest members of the Caroline County community. And I thought it would just be a nice way to say, Miss Field is ninety, Mister Fields is also uh in his nineties. And I'd like to just, um, in some way, just say thank you for all the hard work they've done in the community to make the Reedy Church District a better district, particularly the Dawn Community.
Second.
Like to make a motion that we rename the uh, we, we have a naming for the playground equipment as the uh Deacon Fields and Miss Irene Fields uh Community Playground.
Alright, you already got your second for Mister Thomas.
Underwood, cuz Mrs. Fields has done more for Caroline County than a lot of people in the county, so. Thank you.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mister Underwood.
Thank you.
Number twelve.
I got a question because the W W N associates will expire as of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. So do we have time to do this?
Where are you at?
Number twelve. Task order.
Yeah, we ju, we, that's, that's why it's before you now, tonight, but we need, we need to get the contracts out and executed. If we can do that, our analysis of that contract is that, that we can proceed with it. Um, pri, as long as we have these task contracts executed prior to the expiration date. We don't necessarily need to complete the task contract itself before the expiration of the overall contract.
Yeah, cuz I'm just typically used to when you have a contract in your end date, even if you award, you, you're done.
Yeah, I mean, and, and this is probably more nuanced than you're looking for, but that, 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 the term of that contract actually exceeds beyond that end date. But we are applying Virginia procurement law, which limits how long these two, these term contracts can be. And that September twenty twenty-five date is the end of what, what procurement law allows us to do. So if you read that contract, it would actually extend further, but we're just trying to be as conservative as possible under Virginia procurement law.
That was my own, I, I just, you know, it's thirteenth, it ends, and I'm just like, and what I do, I can't go beyond that date, so. I thought it was gonna be incredible they were gonna do this in two weeks.
No.
The sooner we get Drybridge Road started, the better for everybody, so I'm gonna make a motion to, to go ahead.
Alright, so I have a motion in a second to authorize the county administrator to execute the task contracts. Uh, do I have uh a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? So moved. Mister To, Mister Underwood, done. He's left the meeting. I'm, I'm sure he was, he was a thumbs up, I'm sure on that. But I will just put him down as abstained. Alright. Informational calendar items. You're up, Mister.
As usual, we um included a status of capital projects reports for you to look over, summary of planning commission uh recommendations from their April twenty-fourth meeting, um, and then our calendar. Um, so you can see Memorial Day was already mentioned in the program that'll be on uh courthouse lawn. Our board meeting is, uh, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is uh six P M on the twenty-seventh. Um, that is when we do have the budget public hearing advertised, and then in June, our regular meeting is the tenth. Um, the county fair starts on the eighteenth, runs through the twenty-first. Um, part of that time, June nineteenth, uh, county offices will be closed, cuz that has become a, a state holiday, federal holiday too, I think, but anyway, state holiday for sure. Um, so that's what we have on the calendar so far. Um, probably add a few more things if we can find those out on, by the twenty-seventh.
Did we get a request from the schools for a joint meeting? I know they wanted to do it now, but we didn't have a chance to do it today. Did, did they put in a request?
We've got a staff, uh, agreed to staff meeting next week.
Okay.
Do you remember whether there's, are they here still? Y'all wanna meet?
No, I just wanna make sure that they're, they're, they're working on the meeting, cuz I have a question about what they're trying to do. What's that? I didn't have it in my pocket. That's probably the last meeting. Is that the right date? Okay. Well, in, in, in.
They still are requesting a, a, a joint meeting. But we don't have dates. If y'all have dates you wanna give to the schools, they can, you know.
But, but you just said you got a staff meeting.
Tomorrow, 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 two, two thirty.
Alright, would you, would you ask during that meeting, I, I, I don't know, but I understand the schools were going to look at, at trailers for the, the, the uh o- overcrowding.
Correct. I think they went to Louisa.
Yeah, I mean, it went somewhere out of, you know, wherever that's fine. The, the point is, would you ask them if they would consider moving the fifth graders to the old Bowling Green Elementary and the old Ladysmith Elementary as opposed to getting trailers? Before we asked to move all the pre-K kids, and all of the pre-K kids, I understand, might need an extra bathroom in each room. But if you move the fifth graders, you wouldn't need an extra bathroom in each room. And whatever money we spent renovating those buildings or maintaining those buildings would be well spent. Well, we can just buy a oven and whatever.
We, yeah, we can buy whatever needs to go in there for a kitchen, cuz the kitchen exists.
The kitchen is still there. And, and that's the thing, I, well, I haven't polled the rest of the board, but I'm willing to support whatever we need to do to make that building work right now.
Where, in, in Bowling Green Elementary where their offices are?
Correct. That's what, that, that's what the superintendent said. They would, you know, be willing to share their offices and make space. And there's gotta be space. I don't know, uh, if you could find out in that meeting, I'd like to know how much rent Miss Allison's daycare pays to be in there.
Right, it, it, certainly in anything you think of between t- t- tonight and tomorrow, if you let me know tomorrow.
You're getting all my thoughts right now.
Yeah, I will certainly ask them those questions, but I'm just saying if anything else comes up.
But I would like to know how much rent they'd get from Miss Allison's daycare, and if Miss Allison would be willing to locate to some other part. Cuz she's got, she's got the area that has the kitchen.
It's down the hall, but yeah, she's on that whole hallway.
Right. Okay.
We'll certainly do that.
Thank you.
Alright, gentlemen, any closing, any closing board comments?
I, I had one, Mrs. Long, that I would like to, um, I, I wanted to say that I talked to a number of folks and figured out their rates in Bowling Green and around Bowling Green, and most of them are about even with the fifty-two cent tax rate and their reassessment. So it, it, it did not affect a, a lot of the folks that I talked to. And um, just was glad to be able to help them and run the formula for them to show them what their percentages were.
Thank, and thank you for doing that.
Because they are sixty-seven percent is the line for anybody watching. If you're below sixty-seven percent, um, you're probably yeah, your value increase is under sixty-seven percent, you're probably not taking a, a big hit in terms of just taxes.
I beg to differ with your math, Mister Sealy, because I know personally, mine went up twenty percent.
Sixty-three.
Alright, gentlemen.
Three cents, okay, per, percent.
At this time, the board is going to uh go to closed session. Uh, I have no idea what time we are going to be out. If you all wanna sit and look at a blank screen, you're welcome to. But we will be back whenever we conclude the business for tonight. Gentlemen, we are recessed to closed session.
Alright, I move that this board convenes in closed meeting pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel.
the consultation with legal counsel exemption of section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A-eight of the Code of Virginia for discussions regarding zoning, regulatory, and legal compliance issues. Also, the personnel exemption of section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A-one of the Code of Virginia to discuss personal matters related to the county administration. And three, the contract exemption of two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A-twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia for discussion in terms of potential performance and incentive agreement related to a development project within the Mattapanah District, where open discussion would adversely affect the bargaining, bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the county.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are recessed to closed session.
Order come out of session so we can go home.
All right, I move that the Carolina County Board of Supervisors certified at the best of each board members knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open and meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the board. Can I get a second?
Second.
And a vote, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have to certify Mr. Blacktease, Mr.
ISO certified.
Forehand.
ISO certified.
ISO certified.
And ISO certified.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
Aye.
All in favor, let go home.
Motion adjourned.
Motion is always in order. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, have a good night.